For for quite some time talking about and planning to get this project off the ground. We do now have some grant funding available that we're using to to help fund this project, which is really great. As I mentioned, this is kind of the industry standard at this phase. So I think it's a great time for Norman to kind of come in and and get this implemented. Breast practices have definitely been established. I know Brian and I have definitely done a lot of these projects around the country at this phase. We are kind of seasoned seasoned consultants at this point. We've we've seen a lot, almost everything that I think we can see at this phase. You know, we see have seen it all. So there's a lot of issues that we can kind of get ahead of, some things that we can look for, and some things that we can definitely plan ahead to prevent that might have happened to other cities that might have implemented this and might not have been as successful. So yeah, so we have a great team involved here, and we're excited.
Yeah, so we just kind of give in history because I know we have some new council members. So 2021 is when we started this project, did the first initial feasibility study, presented that to council, and we were ready to go move forward with it. We included as part of a rate proposition one of the projects we were focusing on. Unfortunately, that project or that rate vote was unsuccessful. So then we kind of tabled it. But while that was going on, we had submitted an application to the Bureau of Reclamation for a Watersmart grant, and then we were successful. And they're going to give us $2 million of funding. There's no cost share that we've got to do on that. So then we said, okay, we've got this funding. Came back to council and said, how do you want us to proceed? Worked on getting all the documents ready to go, got it back out on the street because council said move forward, and then had a consultant selection ready to go. We're ready to go early 2023. And then unfortunately, we got kind of bogged down in government restrictions on how we purchase and where we purchase from, referred to it as Build America by America or Baba. So once we finally got the green light on that this February, we said, go. And that's why we're here now. So it's been a long time coming, but we're happy to start seeing some some progress and stuff in the ground.
Yes. All right, so this is a little bit more about kind of the customer benefits that I alluded to a little bit earlier. So this is kind of a little snippet of what the customer portal might look like. Once we kind of get a good portion of the meter population in the ground, we'll kind of start to to debut this to customers. We definitely want to wait until we get a majority of the population available so that everyone can have access to it kind of at the same time. So they'll have access to online tools now. We'll be able to kind of see their usage patterns, as you can see depicted here. They'll be able to see kind of more leak detection type notifications within that customer portal. So if if we do detect a leak, they'll be able to see that within their portal. Reduced staff visits, obviously, they the team won't have to go out there and manually read those meters anymore. So we won't have to to go to the customer sites as frequently. So that's definitely less less trucks on the road also, really just for for maintenance at this point.
Thank you. Mr. Maddley, can you refresh us on approximately how much water were lost in the system every year percentage wise? I know it's a lot.
I would say 20, but it's a little less than 20.
Fifteen to 20.
This program is going to help us identify where those leaks might be happening and hopefully make the whole system more sustainable.
You won't ever get rid of it all, but like 8% would be a good system.
So instead of having to go maybe ask for another water rate increase, we just use the water we have more responsibly. Just make sure we're on the same page.
I just had a question about the access to online tools. So is it all via computer, like desktop, or will there be a mobile app?
Yes, it'll primarily be via the desktop. So it is mostly a kind of a web based application, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian. So it'll be, you know, maybe a link, we're still kind of working through the integrations here, but a link on the the website, the city website where, you know, if you want to view your your bill usage a little bit more granularly, if they're looking at their bill, they can kind of click a button and then kind of dial into the actual usage.
So a user might log in, pay their bill, be like, oh, I want to look at my info. The other question I had was, what is the ADA accessibility like for this portal?
For the portal?
Yeah, for people looking granularly at their usage.
Sure, and you can kind of speak to this probably a little bit more, Brian, but I'm I believe that most of the sites that we have worked with in the past, and I'm sure SilverBlaze is the same, has full ADA compliance, as as would any other website. You know, audio visual support there that's available, so.
We'll make sure that that's implemented as well and get you more information on that.
All right, city benefits. So of course, we talked a little bit about the operational efficiency. Obviously, this is benefits to the the utility itself as well. There's more additional data. We get to kind of dial into that water loss investigations a little bit more closely. We've already talked about the truck rolls, of course, increased staff staff safety if they're not having to be out in the field as frequently. We have an opportunity to do more planning to try to investigate some of these water loss opportunities. Of course, more accurate reads means more accurate billing. That's definitely a big one for the utility side of things. Increased awareness of system issues. So we'll we'll be able to get notifications really quickly whenever there's, say, a main break or something similar to that. The customer will likely know about that before the customer even has a chance to even notice it. So that will definitely help from the customer side as well as the operational side. And then, of course, we've already touched on the fewer system losses as well.
What's the vulnerabilities to a system like this from like outside hackers? I mean, I'm a huge fan. I love it, but you know, can you discuss the risks?
Great, great question.
I don't want to say in Russia, it's turning out.
Oh, of course. Yeah, so I can speak to this with pretty confidence. It's probably even more at this point, but it has that 256 bit encryption that is on both sides, from the utility side and also the the meter side. So that kind of helps a lot, and it does use its own frequency of of radio frequency. So it's on its own bandwidth completely. So it won't interfere with any emergency response communications or anything like that. But I have not been a part of any project or have experienced anything where that has been, there has been any type of data breach or anything like that.
In worst case scenario, how quick is it to go back to a manual system? I mean, just like where we can turn the water on and keep the water flowing if something did happen.
It'll be manual. Water will always be delivered. We just might not be able to read it, but the meter will hold the reading for 60 days or how many days up to, that's what Brian. So it'll hold it there until we can go access the meter.
And then also, like I said, there it's no personally identifiable information is is transferred over the air. So it's all based on meter number and serial number and all of that. So that's another question that customers often have is, you know, somebody's going to know exactly what I'm doing and what my usage is. It's all kind of jumbled up with with meter numbers, no names or credit card information or anything like that is shared over the network either.
And IT is, they have a very strong position now, so we're making sure that we're doing everything.
I just want to make sure we have access, you know, the systems have access regardless of what happens infrastructure wise.
And there's only a small number of meters that will have like the the shut off, and we're doing that because that'll give us pressure and temperature information within our system. So even if, I don't think it'd get hacked, but even if it did, like the meter can't get shut off. So you have to manually go turn it on.
The meters, if they fail, they fail open, meaning like the water's going to go to the house.
The only thing that would fail would just be its communication at this point. So the meter itself would not stop the flow of water in any way. It would just be, oh, this meter's not communicating anymore. So we'll just go back to the tried and true. We'll read the meter until we get this fixed, and then, yeah, questions?
Questions? Is the communication managed two way?
Yes, so it's a two way communication. So as Nathan mentioned, we are going to have just a few meters out in the service area that will be remote disconnect or pressure monitoring capable meters. So, you know, we can push commands to to the meter, but then they also are obviously constantly transmitting the usage data on a daily basis.
Four times a day. How are they powered? Just battery?
Yeah, so of course, yeah, that that the commands that we send to the meter themselves will obviously impact battery life. So the more we maybe say, click a button to get an actual on demand read, I want a read from the past, you know, within the last hour or so or since the last four hour communication, then we can do that, that we're capable of doing that. But it does have some impact to the battery life as well. But the believe the warranty is about 10 years.
There are 20 years for the radios and most of the meters, the larger meters, those that are very large, are 10 years. And and let me say, it's all it's really just the register and the battery itself. It's not the entire meter that would need to be replaced.
And we'll kind of get into the different components of the meter versus the register when we get to the demo phase, it'll be a little bit more clear.
So you guys have the the hub on the water towers. So it's not using cellular. How far away can the meters be from the the water tower?
Oh, pretty far.
Miles.
Yeah.
Miles away, and it's using the 900 megahertz spectrum. And that's owned by Census. Maybe that's a little bit, we're getting too detailed into it, but the 900 megahertz spectrum is what they're operating.
They did a propagation study when they submitted their proposal. All the vendors did that.
Made sure we had the right amount of towers to cover the full service area.
Now, if I'm thinking of the the right chipset, is there a 433 megahertz option?
I believe so. That's correct. But this this spectrum is is owned and can only be used and operated by a specific vendor who is providing that to you guys for the service, extra security as well.
You know, what really protects is use 868. And you said that there were some that have valve attached that you can remotely shut off, but not all of them?
And we can kind of, we can live into the system and and, you know, have an inventory of those. And as we maybe see places that might that might be a good spot to to put one, we can always swap it out later at a later a later date if we think that might be.
There's currently 50 identified.
And we're going to put those out in zones just so that way, if there's a main break, we'll see it at that that meter, we'll see that there's a pressure differential there and like it's not running normally and be able to know, oh, we need to have guys go look at that. Maybe where we can identify some of those, because a few years ago, we had a leak on flood, but nobody could see it because it was going straight to like a watershed. And then eventually it got to a pond, and the guy's like, I'm irrigating and my pond's not going down. But this will help us see those things a little bit clearer because we might see that pressure differential at those meters.
Okay, neat.
All right, so I'm Brian Kaiser. I'm the project manager implementing the solution as a whole from IT side all the way down to the meter deployment. So what's the first thing that you do whenever you get a a project? You surround yourself with a good team, right? So you're only as good as your team. So the first thing that we did, we went out and and looked at those people that we've worked with before that were confident that have done things well. So obviously, E Source and ourselves, we've worked together quite a bit. We I work for utilities and Advanced Systems, they're bringing together, they currently are helping you maintain the CIS system. They're bringing the customer portal. And they are working with a group called SmartWorks. These two companies are owned by the same parent company. SmartWorks owns the meter data management system. It's a system where all the meter data is put together and how you manage that. UTS is bringing us the products, is the main vendor to provide the products. And then Census is the manufacturer of all the products. Since this is a large, you might have heard billion dollar company operates across the world, okay? So I've been doing this for, she said, this started in the early 2000s. I've been doing this since the early 2000s. So some of the alpha products that we've done here, so I've implemented millions of products around the world, different countries, provinces, cities, and they're all unique. But the only reason why I say that is because we've learned all the things to do better, and we've made it better as each product and each project that we've come across, okay? So all of these customers here, we've worked together, all of them have done millions of products as well. Let's go to the next one.
Yeah, so E Source helped the city kind of create the RFP process that we went through, went out to bid for this, and and Utili Use is the prime here, and and they really won out with with just a great robust team that has has a has a great history and has worked together before and has proven proven these these integrations at other utilities before as well.
All right, so we're going to get to the schedule real quick. I won't spend a whole lot of time on this. We do have a very detailed put together schedule and plan. We started in early June, and by this time, we have most of our back infrastructure, the servers stood up. Some of this data is already coming through. We have 22 meters and radios already in the field, and those radios and meters are already providing data back into the systems. The first video that that they put together, that person's house that they installed that meter on, within four hours, ironically, we found that 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 homeowner had a leak in their home. So they were ended up being a small leak. They were ended up with 30 gallons every hour that they were losing. So we talked about water loss. That was found within four hours of that water loss. So we could see a consistent 30 hour or 30 gallon usage for every single hour that it came back.
Because there's former council member Bill Scanlon, and so Scott went to approach him. What'd he say?
Well, I called him and I said, you have a leak. I'd like to come out and investigate. He kind of snickered and said, well, I know I have a leak. I just want to see if you guys will find it. And I said, well, okay.
And it was installed just yesterday, so it's pretty quick.
It was a good one.
So some of the great value that we're going to be able to provide to your your customers, okay? So again, a lot of these systems are already up, they're stood up, they're working. We're now in the process of integrating these systems. We're now at a position where your customers are going to start to see us out in the field. So we're going to, we've completed, we are completing the integrations, and we're getting into an initial deployment area. We're going to select approximately 300 locations to where we can do some really good thorough testing. And those are being selected now, and we're going to start putting those in. So this is going to be our initial area deployment. We then have a very good robust user acceptance testing to make sure that the system is operating correctly, providing the right data, working as it's designed. We then start our rollout sometime here in, again, September, but we're going to keep rolling all the way through, and we're going to build up here in February. We'll be installing approximately 1,000 meters a week at that point. So whenever we get to that, we'll be doing 1,000 meters a week. So again, your customers are going to be seeing us out there. The customer engagement portal, we're going to begin out in September. The reason for that is you need to have some data that's available that you want to display to your customers. It's not useful if you displayed and you'd only have, you know, maybe a week's worth of data. So we're giving them some back history so that they can see some really useful data that they can use. So we'll start that sometime out in April. And we plan to complete by 2026.
And something else that E Source will also be supporting the city with will be, you know, talking about the policies that are currently in place and things that might need to change. We'll have a lot of opportunity to discuss that and any type of business process change changes that will come. So we took a look at the the city team that's that we're working with, the utility, and a lot of their day to days really are going to change a little bit. So they're really just transitioning their daily rules into being a little bit more efficient, and now they'll have more time to tackle other things that might have just been everlastingly on the back burner for them. So we'll have a lot of opportunity to talk about that as well.
Right, so the main message I wanted to get across is we've got a great schedule, but the most important thing is you guys, you've got a great team around you, and you got a great utility customers that we come in here to work with, a lot of good skills we're putting to work. And that's it, and I'm going to, I believe, Tiffany, do you want to speak a little bit on the next?
I'll do this one, I'll do this one real quick. So we're working with Tiffany real close on how we're how we're reaching our customers. So social media, she's got the website stood up now. We're working on a brochure, E Source is helping us design that, and we'll have that available to where we'll be able to send it out to our customers. But we're going to do, look at trying to do some community meetings. And then the mailer, we're looking to get a mailer sent out to all of our customers next week. So that'll be well in advance of when they're actually going to see somebody at their house. So we we realize that, but we wanted to have them for that for context. And then when Brian's team, they get a little bit closer, a month out, they're going to issue a post or send out a postcard to them. So that way, they're not, they know that they're coming. We're going to have them put yard signs at kind of the end of the block. So that way, if people see people working, they don't have to say, who's this? And call in, try to figure that out. And then as he showed on his video, when they do that, when the work's done, if there's anything that the customer needs to do, like how they flush their lines, they're going to put that on the door tag. Or if there's a problem and they couldn't do it, they're going to leave that there as well, and the customer will be able to get back to us, so.
Multiple touch points for the customer to be aware, which is great.
Are we going to send anything out on the water bills?
We didn't actually plan to put it in the water bill. We were actually going to do a separate mailer on.
Might not be a bad idea, since everybody.
All right, and we'll kind of breeze past this because a lot of this was covered in the in the video, but this is just what the customer can expect as far as, you know, the installation of the actual meters when they come to their premises. So with that, I'll let us see what this weird thing is.
All right, we have the demonstration. All right, Scott, Scott's going to be my assistant here, all right? So Scott's team put this together. This is hot off the presses. We just put this together. It's going to grow as we get as we progress, and this is going to be a good tool that the the team there at Norman can go and use and speaking at different presentations, going to homeowners associations, going to meetings, and show them exactly how it looks and what it looks like, okay? So imagine, use your imagination, that you would cut right a square right out of the box, right where your meter is located. This is what it would look like. This is exactly what it would look like.
He's loading the gopher.
He's loading the gopher and I appreciate him putting that on. So this is exactly what it would look like. So let's start off here with the lid, all right? So this is a typical lid. Either it's going to be plastic or it's going to be metal, okay? This right here is an antenna. So your customer is going to be able to see the antenna once it gets installed. So that's going to be right there. That antenna is connected to a radio. Here's the radio. This radio is is encased within within gel. It's all waterproof, and it has a a long life, like I said, 20 years. So here's this.
And I think the low profile too, just somebody asked about ADA earlier, that it's it's pretty low.
Yeah, and set to the meter lid.
This plugs into the to the meter, okay? So what does it look like inside of that pit? I bet you've all been wondering what exactly does it look like inside a a water pit, all right? So this is what a water pit looks like in underground, all right? So within within this outside plastic head is your meter, okay? This is the the meter that we're being that's being purchased. They're called Ipro meters. They're made by Census. They're sitting here on a riser. This is exactly how most of these meters are set up, and the water would come down and out through this area. So the installer, as they showed in the video, would come install this in and this in, the city in and the customer in. You can still, like like most meters, that was put in a little hard, you can still lift this and then read your meter just like they always have. It's a digital display, so it's always there and available.
When we decided we were going to move forward with this company, we started installing those now, and so our meter readers are currently reading.
So you can read that by, you know, by visuals. So if a customer wants to really see what's on their bill, they can come out here and look at the meter as well. So that radio communicates with one of the water towers. On top of currently five of your water towers, there's one one cellular tower and four tower and four water towers, you have an antenna. So that radio is communicating from there up to one of your water towers. And again, we've got 22 of them installed now that are reading consistently. We have places from an apartment where there is, the consumption is very large, large meters, all the way down to smaller residential's currently at hand. Is there anything else?
What happens when say Councilman Peacock gets home and he takes it off and he puts it in backwards?
There is, these meters have alarms and alerts. There's many types of alarms and alerts that can come from that, and that's a great question. If it's installed backwards, it will provide a backwards flow alarm. And it's also, you know, obvious from looking at it, the install, that it was installed backwards. In fact, there was one not long ago that we put in right away, they caught it because it was installed backwards and the alarms come on, okay? There's a bunch of other types of alarms. If this wire gets cut or the communication is lost or.
High school kids figure out what's in there and go and jerk the lid off.
If they jerk the lid off and it and it gets broken or.
Gopher comes in, pulls that wire.
Maggots below, you know, all all these different types of things. There's all types of alarms that come off of this. Battery communicates battery information. It's similar to a computer. It really is. I mean, it has a whole lot of smarts with inside that meter. So it's not just water flow, it also has.
Another opportunity for water loss identification soon.
So again, if there is continual consumption and usage, it'll flag it and it'll send an alert, an alarm, and it'll let you know, so not someone's not out there standing there, I'm sorry.
I've I've seen that meter box in Chris's conference room for about two weeks, and I kept wondering, what on earth is he doing? Now I know what the meter box is.
Now you know. And now you know there's gophers within every single one of them. Is there any questions?
Thank you all very much. Let's move on to item number two, to give you some time to move your home home. Item number two, discussion regarding the city of Norman's infrastructure needs related to the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority's access program. Mr. Sturz.
All right, we had this conversation a couple of weeks ago, and since then, we've put together, as requested, utilizing Councilman Nash's information and information that we had to put together that that resolution. And we just kind of want to come back tonight and discuss it further. I know there were some questions that were asked, and I said I'd try to track down some information and kind of want to share that information. There's a lot of questions about the environmental. So I reached out and asked for a little more information. They are not performing a full NEPA through the whole corridor. They will where necessary, which will basically be at the federal shared properties. They don't have to do the NEPA because they are not using federal funds. That's what kicks you into the NEPA process. However, they are doing studies that are included in the NEPA, including wetlands, water bodies, threatened endangered species, historical and archaeological studies, as well as noise studies. So that was one of the specific questions, are they doing noise studies? And they are doing noise studies, which kind of surprised me. So we're also asked, which is kind of what's going to be the timeline on those? For all those areas that are actively in design, they're already underway with those studies. So they're already, they're already started, they're already progressing through them. Obviously, the first phase they'll be completing will be done first, and they'll follow with successive stages as they go. And then at the SET, when that moves forward, they would start that corridor at the time they got to start that design. There's a certain amount of design you have to have in place before you can actually start the environmental, because you have to be able to say what your corridor is and exactly what you're doing. So that's kind of where a lot of that's going together. So they're doing a lot of the field studies right now, but not the final studies necessarily. So that's where they are today, and they committed that they, the information I got back was that they would have all permits six months prior to going to construction. And most of those permits will require completion of these environmental studies. So that's kind of the timeline and the pace that they will be moving at. So that's a lot of the information that we have so far.
Yes, thank you for inquiring on those environmental studies. And in regards to the noise study, where did they intend to study the impact of that? This is east west corridor, it's not going to be north south that they're studying yet.
Well, yeah, because they don't have a corridor to study yet on north south. So they're just going to be doing the east west on that area that was yellow on the drawings are the only areas they'll be doing right now, but they will be including that as they get designed and they'll move forward, they will start those studies on those corridors also.
And then with the resolution that we have drafted and is on the agenda tonight, my question about the future of the north south, could we have the noise studies in that too as a guarantee, like yes, you will do?
That's just part of the studies they're doing on the corridors.
But would it be so bad to have it reaffirmed?
That's a decision that council would like that added. We can certainly add that, absolutely.
Good, thank you.
It's worthy to add it, make the ask it, please.
Yeah, don't have an issue with that. Councilmember?
Fed lands, they'll need to do environmental impact statement, the full NEPA standard, but we can't make them do those studies on our land?
We could not, we could request them, but we couldn't require it.
We're going to make that a necessary part of acquiring cities permits?
That's not required of city permits, so that would be going outside of your normal permit requests. At that point, we're starting to look like we're not treating everybody fairly. So that'd be a question I'd probably defer to legal on that question.
There's not really a basis for comparison off fair because it's Turnpike Authority. There's not another Turnpike Authority that comes through that that would have to treat a similar manner.
Sure, but when when, for a permitting purpose, there's just a developer. So when you look at it, they're they're a developer. It's going to be a long linear development, but we've got to treat them as we would any other developer. So that's how we would treat it. There's no requirements right now for floodplain permit or for a stormwater permit to have to complete a full NEPA study.
Could we make that as a requirement if a project is of a certain size and scope?
Again, I would have to look at what we'd have to do to make that, probably have to be ordinance changes to get that done prior to that, which we can discuss. You're you're asking legal questions, I'm sorry. I'm in the engineering and public work school. So that's kind of the story on on that portion. There were also some other questions. I tried to dig in on the permitting issue a little bit deeper, and I might be more confused than I started at this point. It does look like they actually, ODOT does get permits from City Norman when they are performing work within the city of Norman because they do not have their own OKR10 permit. And it looks like that the turnpike falls in that same category. So they would come for a stormwater construction permit, just like any other developer would. They're doing it in smaller sections. So they'd have to get multiple. They couldn't just do one and cover the whole time. They do have a third-party consultant that monitors that for them to watch that. There's also a lot of discussion about could we do monitoring? We think we have monitoring stations in place today. One is at 24th and Indian Hills. That would basically be that first section that they're already looking to go out in construction on first. In fact, we're probably going to have to work with them to move that, that gauging station at some point to the location that we can continue to use it. But then there's also another one that is being moved, should be moved in the next two to three weeks. It'll be at 60th and Franklin and that's going to catch everything to 60th. And then we would look at further monitoring locations. From that point, you get out of the Little River Corridor, you start getting some of the other smaller creeks. They're, they're very small coming into the lake. So we would look at, with future additions, may be able to put in some additional monitoring. That would be able to help us especially during construction to look for turbidity. If there's a lot of sediment release, we could catch that. Now, on a day like Sunday, everybody's going to show a high sediment release. I don't know if anybody drove around. I didn't see any clear running water anywhere. It was all pretty muddy. But will help us to be able to track and watch that as we move forward. And then on the, on the floodplain permits, that's where I'm still trying to get a little bit more information. The, the information that was given to me was that they, they get with the Oklahoma Water Resources Board, which is the state NFIP. They're, they're the ones that do all the floodplains statewide and manage the National Flood Insurance Program, which we are a part of. And they help them with the jurisdictions. So at that point, for example, we do not require OU to get a floodplain permit. ODOT does not have to get a floodplain permit because that's state-owned property. So I'm still trying to get a little more information on that and I'm working that through. So that's kind of the, the permitting side of that.
On the stormwater permit, that's where they have to show all their erosion control measures and how they're going to protect stormwater inlets and everything. And so. Yes, that is, that's not the protection, but that is a step in the protection process.
Correct. And that's basically where it all really kind of begins. So in that program, that, they have to produce a stormwater pollution prevention plan that lays out all of their, their best management practices, BNP's. And so that, that also gives their inspection timelines based upon the state permit. And that is a, a living document. So if they make changes, it has to be shown and noted and documented in that document.
Yes, sir. You brought the national flood insurance. For, for the city to be covered, to be a part of that program, what's required? Can you remind us?
You just hit me with the question that I'd probably have to get help on as far as everything's required for that.
In regards to that's what we're doing here. I mean.
Right. So we have to have a permitting process in place, floodplain administrator in place. We go further than that. We're in the, the community rating system, which is how we lower our rates based upon different items. And we're always looking to get a, a better number on that. But so, but it is a voluntary program. It's not required.
Kind of is to my flood insurance though.
If you want flood insurance, it's a good way to go. Yeah. And with that, I'm, can I answer any more questions or listen to discussion regarding the, the resolutions?
Any more questions from council? I guess. Councilmember Nash, is this your?
Oh, I've got all kinds of questions.
Okay. We got about half an hour.
Yeah. Just out of curiosity, one of the paragraphs that was added to the resolution was Norman requesting that the east-west connector include the construction of access points at I-44 Southwestern Avenue. Now, aside from using Oklahoma City more in the legislature streets, why would we have to request things that are already in the design?
That was a request that was made by OTA and they, they asked us to make that request. So I don't know that there's a harm in making that request. I mean, it's pretty much, those are, they're in, but they're not guaranteed. And they just have asked us if we would put that in there as a, as an inclusion.
That just seems weird. But those have been part of their design for the last two years.
You've seen more design than I have. I haven't seen, I haven't seen any design plans that have those specifically shown or called out.
Let's see. I think a lot of these are just, they're going to have to be discussed among council more than having questions behind them. I wouldn't put them in here if I was uncertain. So how much of what we saw added, I was pleasantly surprised when I saw the, the resolution. Basically my whole resolution minus like three paragraphs oddly taken from the older and newer. I didn't expect nearly that much of it to be incorporated. But just out of curiosity, the, the content that was added to it, was that authored by staff or the OTA?
We had some samples that they, that they shared with us, but we also put part of it in ourselves. So it was kind of a joint. We didn't go with everything they sent us either. We cut out a lot of their, their stuff that they had, that they had in a sample resolution that we didn't agree with. So.
Can we write a resolution for them?
I believe that's what we're doing now.
Well, this is us passing a resolution. Can we write a resolution for them to pass?
I'm sure that we can do anything that council desires.
Like I said, I don't really have any pressing issues that I'm curious about. Most of this is just going to be up to the council to, to discuss and decide. And I think there's still a lot of consideration that the council needs to make on this because most council hasn't seen it for more than a few minutes since the initial resolution was released. Thank you.
I just had a question about process. So I got the email on Tuesday. I responded with the three things that immediately caught my attention. And I didn't really hear back until Friday when the agenda was released. And I was kind of curious if other council members, since we're in a public meeting, can ask, felt like whatever they added to the editorial process got addressed or heard back? Or did they also see the resolution for the first time on Friday?
I think Rick sent, can you describe, Rick, what you distributed on Tuesday of last week?
Yes, my, my understanding of the consensus from the last meeting was to try to combine both resolutions into one that we thought that OTA might sort of take as acceptable, if you want to call it that. But also including some of your feedback with regard to what you didn't think was appropriate. Things like the partnership language along those lines. I emailed that resolution to all the council members last Tuesday. Some of the responses I got had information in there or had proposed amendments that were not discussed last Tuesday. So I didn't feel comfortable inserting those, knowing that the council would have an additional opportunity to talk about those issues and to see if there was a consensus with regard to adding those to whatever was ultimately determined to be appropriate. So some of those issues that you raised in your email and my sort of oversight, if you want to call that forenomic, seemed to be more issues that I thought that you probably could raise either in this meeting or make an amendment on the floor with regard to those particular issues to see if there was a majority of the county.
Okay. Um, well, I guess I extend the question to everybody else who got the email on Tuesday. If you were able to weigh in and if your concerns were addressed or do you feel comfortable moving into the next meeting with this particular version?
So I was out of state until late Friday night and I responded, yep, to you. I knew that I hadn't had an opportunity to read it at all. So I have not been able to provide any input at all and address my constituents' concerns.
Yes, I, I got it when everybody else did and didn't see anything that needed changing.
Councilmember Nash, was your intent to do these amendments tonight?
Yes.
Each one?
Yes, however, that is with some hesitation that this, this is obviously very heavily influenced by a single councilman. I really don't feel like council's had the opportunity to have thorough enough discussion on their inputs, their thoughts and to adequately represent their constituents in the creation of this resolution. And we definitely can't do it in nine minutes.
Well, that's kind of where I was going, you know, based on what councilmembers to my left and right have said. All the, all the red I'm seeing on here, it almost seems like we need to go back and have one more stab at this before we make it, take it to primetime. So I'm of the mind that we postpone this tonight, but I will wait till we get to Florida.
It's just, it's a, it's a lot of words and all the thoughts and it might end up in poor craftsmanship.
Well, that's always been my take. You, you don't make good policy on the fly, especially under duress. And so it's a, an emotional topic with a lot at stake. I think we need to take the time to get it right. And I think our constituents would respect that. I mean, I don't think that's a, it's a negative at all.
Councilmember Peacock, we, we recognize that when things are rushed, yeah, they typically don't have the desired outcome and, which is why we started the conversation early in the month to provide as much runway as needed to provide counsel all the time they need for review and input in that final document. So, you know, we have another study session on the books for next Tuesday and we can absolutely agendize this for a similar conversation to that had at the prior study session.
We don't jeopardize any kind of timeline with the OTA by.
No, we, we recognize the 27th would be available for council to reconsider and take action on that resolution. But we would strongly recommend that an action be taken on the 27th as, as that Labor Day weekend coming up does represent a timeline OTA has indicated really approaching that 60% design criteria deadline.
That's good to know that we at least have the runway to take one more week and look at it, or two more weeks, I should say. So, thank you.
Well, at least be able to run over it and, and, and do the research and do the things that we need to do as you're able to confirm.
I think there's a lot in here that, you know, Councilmember Nash has, has put in his comments that are worth discussing. I just don't know that doing it from the DIES, that's probably not the right approach. Or effective, I think that's right. I mean, there's a lot of emotions tied to this issue. I don't, I'd like for us to take a clean, logical, emotionless stance, take a look at it.
Thirty-three maybe?
Thirty-three motions.
I'd also like to add that I'm supportive of postponing as well. And I would like to focus some of our conversations moving forward to be, also to address some misinformation about legal stuff that I've seen online or in my emails that people still think that we have a legal route to stop this or that not doing permits will stop this. And I just really feel more discussion would educate the public.
Happy to incorporate that in next Tuesday's agenda to make sure we can cover all of those elements. Is anybody violently opposed to the way that we're going?
No, I'll support postponement so that we can give these the proper review.
So council, it is agendized, so it will require a motion from the DIES to consider the postponement and a second and evoked and we can make that so. Anything else from council?
I'm very adjourned to.
Do you want, um, speaking here? So at the study session next week, do you, are you wanting to just go through every one of these one at a time? Get feedback on them?
Kind of linear and, and then we'll be able to say, we all agree on that and we all don't agree on that and how we fix it.
We have things to add.
Absolutely.
Sure.
And so that, it'll probably be a long study session. Okay. It's a long topic.
Maybe it's the only item.